Good morning, everyone. I would like to call to order this Mayor Commission Budget Work Session. Today is Monday, July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the time is nine oh two. We will get started. Ms. Johnson, do you want to tee this up? Are you doing the presentation?
Yes.
I'll just turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor, Commission, staff, members of the public that's watching the work session by television. As the mayor indicated, I am City Administrator Fay Johnson, and it is my pleasure to lead the presentation before you this morning. This presentation relates to the proposed FY twenty-four employee compensation, and it aligns with our strategic pillar, number eight, financial sustainability and organizational excellence. Before I actually go into what we're going to cover today, you know, I want to start with acknowledging what it has taken to put all of the information that is going to be presented this morning, starting back in February. So for the last five, maybe four and a half, close to five months, we have been doing a data dump in terms of a detailed analysis of where our salaries stand. And most of that effort, in terms of the legwork, was done by Sylvia Gregory, our Assistant CHFRO. So I want to acknowledge her Yoma's effort in doing the analysis that enabled me to be able to put the plan together. Sylvia was assisted by our Assistant City Administrator, Mr. Rodriguez, and I certainly want to acknowledge his effort. While I have the pleasure of being maybe the architect of the plan, we all know that nothing is done by one individual, and I certainly could not have put this plan together without their assistance. So with that, I'm going to get started. By way of what the board is going to hear this morning, I'm going to start with an overview to put all of this into context, kind of give you a historical snapshot to understand how we got to where we are today. And then I will go into the presentation of the actual proposed plan. That plan is going to start with SEIU and PMSA, and then go into the proposal for the non-union employees. A recap of what will be presented. Again, it's a lot of numbers and data points. And given that, Mayor, I would like to be able to pause between each segment to entertain any discussion or questions from the board. I know this is going to be probably a lot to digest. There are not a number of data points presented to you, and there's probably more data points in my head. Then again, I will do a recap of that information, and then I have a discussion with the board about why it's critical to get the board's support of the plan, talk about next steps, and then wrap up the discussion. So with that, putting things into context. You know, the baseline event that I look at in terms of what was the critical event that primarily caused us to be where we are this morning is the two thousand and nine economic downturn. Since that downturn, the city has continued to experience a steady growth in its population, and it impacted the service demands and the staff workload. Our population back at two thousand and eight was about a hundred and four thousand. Today, we're at a hundred and seventeen thousand plus, depending on which medium you look at. When we think about the demand on population increase, we tend to first think about how it impacts our public safety, staff, police, and fire. And by all means, it has a big impact on police and fire. But a population increase, a population growth, certainly places a demand across the board on city services. It places a demand on increased programming in terms of library services, our housing services, as well as parks and rec, the different types of activities that we have down on the waterfront. And we're continuing to grow in population. I want to just share with all of you, and I know most of you, if not all of you, probably, you know, have tracked the various articles that have been written about our city. But back in May of this year, there was an article in Yahoo Finance that designated the thirty-five fastest-growing cities within the country. West Palm Beach was number twentieth, and I just want to read a snippet from what it says. "West Palm Beach, Florida is renowned for its first-rate amenities, top-notch restaurants, upscale shops, stunning beaches, comfortable weather, and a wide variety of outdoor activity." Those wide variety of outdoor activities certainly relate to the policy and leadership direction of the city and the staff of the city. So the other phenomenon that came out of the two thousand and nine economic downturn was that we had to take various actions to deal with the revenue loss, and it resulted in a significant adverse impact on the city's salary market placement. We had multi-year salary freezes, and we hinted on that last year, but it bears repeating to put this into context. We started out with grappling with how the city was going to manage that deficit by cutting a hundred positions, and incrementally, each fiscal year, additional positions were cut. So in terms of that impact, in summary, and the mitigating actions that have been taken to date to deal with it, while public safety is not the focus of this discussion, but to put the entire workforce into context, I've included them. Public safety represents about thirty-three percent of our workforce, five hundred and ninety-three altogether, between police and fire. So again, dealing with the economic downturn, in FY ten and FY eleven, the city froze the five percent step pay. Came back in FY twelve, put that back into place, and through FY twelve and FY twenty-one, public safety was given their five percent step pay, and we know that's guided by a collective bargaining agreement. But because of where the step pay and then the salaries themselves were, we were still in a low market placement, thirteenth place for FOP and for Fire, IAFF, twentieth place. And because of that market placement and the board's priority on raising public safety to an appropriate place in the market for FY twenty-two through twenty-four, which is the current year CBA, we were able to continue with the five percent step pay and then, for the first time, give them the deserved historic unprecedented market adjustment. And by so doing, we had, we set a goal to bring them from the thirteenth and twentieth place in the market to fifth place in the market. With FOP, what we accomplished was, by allowing each of those unions to reshuffle how they wanted to spread the money within their membership, they were able to accomplish for FOP to come from thirteenth place in the market to second place in the market. Again, our proposal was at a minimum, fifth place in the market. With Fire, IAFF, they reshuffled the deck to take them from the fifth market place, which the city had proposed, to ninth place in the market. Each union has unique kind of circumstances and nuances. So I think it was good to allow them to take into consideration nuances within their memberships and how they wanted to spread the funding, so long as they stayed within the city's budget. So as we stand today, or speak today, FOP is now in third market placement because you have other municipalities who continue to give salary increases, and Fire has helped its market placement. So let's look at the other side of the equation, quality of life in our internal governance operations. Quality of life, for practical purposes, tend to be unsung heroes here within our city, you know, not just within the organization, but within the city. They are not as high-profile as public safety, but our quality of life would not be what it is if we did not have the dedicated employees that we have that perform services that relate to quality of life. The internal governance operation employees, that's sort of a backend, so we tend to not think about it. But I would tell you, if we didn't have the backend operations and employees, we would not be sitting here this morning because we would not have finance running, we wouldn't have HR running, we would not have the legal services running. Those two are component. That's the rest of the workforce, which account for sixty-seven percent of our FTEs, about twelve hundred, rounded for talking purposes. If we look at how the economic downturn of two thousand and nine impacted the salary structure, this group of employees suffered a five-year salary freeze, a COLA, which was three percent from fiscal year FY ten through fourteen. In FY fifteen, the COLAs began to be instituted again, and they went through FY twenty-one. Now, in FY twenty-two, because we were in the second year of negotiating, second year of the SEIU and PMSA contract, it had an opener in there on the finances. So they came back to the table. We agreed to increase the COLA for the first time in the city's history for this particular group of employees to five percent. The first year of their CBA, FY twenty-one, they got a three percent COLA. FY twenty-two, and in the current year, which is the last year of the current CBA, a five percent COLA. In doing that, it caused a disparity between employee positions in SEIU, such as the executive assistants, sitting side by side. One executive assistant in the union, one is not, doing essentially the same functions. One got the five percent COLA, the one that was not in the union got a three percent. That caused some ruckus within the organization, understandably. The board agreed with administration's proposal to give the non-union employees, who were similarly situated, a two percent retroactive COLA, which bought them in line with a five percent. So we had some nuances there. When we look at where this group of employees sit today, they have not gotten a market adjustment and across-the-board market adjustment. The current market placement, they're at eight point one eight percent below the market. And the salary ranges for this group of employees, we're talking about sixty-seven percent of our employees at seven point seven nine percent, or eight percent for talking purposes, below the market. I do want to highlight that for Management One and the mayor's top staff complement, we received the three percent COLA. So we put the highest level of COLA based on the employees that were in the lower pay echelon of the organization. So if you look at it sort of by pie chart, the white represents where we have completed addressing the impact of the two thousand and nine economic downturn in terms of the salaries. When you look at where the large majority of the city employees fall, it's within SEIU and PMSA quality-of-life operations. About fifty-three percent, a little over half of our workforce, fall within that particular work group. And then the balance, that fourteen percent, was within the internal governance operations. So if we look at the work groups by the numbers, the FTE distribution, I won't go over Fire and Police, given that they are not the focus of the presentation, but you see the breakdown of your quality-of-life operations, SEIU, PMSA. You see the breakdown of the internal governance work groups by the numbers. Those different breakdown of numbers comprise the total workforce that we have today of seventeen hundred and ninety-two FTEs. I'll continue, Mayor, unless you all want me to pause right there if there are any questions before I get into...
Commissioners, are there any questions at this point, President Warren and Commissioner Lambert?
What are the one hundred and sixty-six non-management positions? What falls into that category?
Those would be the commission aides, the executive assistants, and you're going to see that list as we get further down, but as an example, it would be those types of positions.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I just had a question on Slide five. I just wanted to make sure I understood what you were saying. So you were going over through the years, the different cost of living increases, but you were saying, to date, we had made no market adjustments, and then in red, this is where we currently are.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions before she moves on? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. Just to clarify, on the non-management, one hundred and sixty-six employees, are those all non-union?
Yes. That is correct.
You can proceed, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. So moving on to the next part of the presentation. So I thought it was, you know, to further put this into context in terms of our current situation, to look at the voluntary turnover and vacancy rate data. And I need to underscore that this data does not include terminations. This data relates to employees who had the option to stay within the organization, whose supervisors preferred that they stayed within the organization, but for other opportunities, they left. So this is voluntary separations. This does not include terminations. If we were to wrap terminations into the turnover rate, it would be a much higher number. So just looking at those who, on their own accord, for various reasons, made that decision, you know, I have to leave primarily in the best interest of my family, my finances, to seek higher pay. In FY twenty-three, that turnover rate was ten point seven five percent, or eleven percent for talking purposes, down from the seventeen point eleven percent in FY twenty-two. And what the board will see is a drop in the turnover rate between this current year and last year, and that's because of a number of measures that we took to try to stop the bleeding. And I'm going to go through that. So that's why you're seeing that drop in that turnover rate. When we look at the peak, and I'm just doing a two-year snapshot, when we look at the peak of vacancies that we had among this group of employees for this fiscal year, two hundred and thirty positions. Now, that's a lot of vacant positions that you've got to try to manage with a short staff, with recruitments, interviewing, filling, and what have you. As we sit this morning, our vacancy rate is two hundred and seven. But that changes depending on, you know, if other employees leave or as we fill positions. The highest peak this fiscal year, two hundred and thirty vacant positions at one time, currently at two hundred and seven. The peak for FY twenty-two was two hundred and thirty-five positions. So a lot of positions to have to continue to manage recruiting and trying to fill on a day-to-day basis. The average days to fill vacancies for FY twenty-three was eighty-four days, and for FY twenty-two, sixty-nine, or point nine, around it, seventy days. Moving right along. The primary reasons that were cited by employees that left, what we tried to do is an exit interview when employees leave. Some, sometimes most employees will grant an exit interview, some do not. But for those who chose to participate in exit interviews, the top four reasons that were cited for them leaving the city, number one was how you pay. I mean, the market is such that employees are leaving in some circumstances to get a thousand dollars or more annually. And you just think about that. You know, we have employees that have great institutional knowledge, but their financial situation dictate that if I can get a thousand dollars or more on my salary, I need to jump ship. You know, we've had one situation where an hourly employee left for a dollar an hour more. And while I would like to have been able to match that offer, I was not in a position to, because it would have unraveled the entire structure with other positions. So I can't just give one employee a higher salary to keep them here without addressing what it does throughout the organization. But I can tell you, there have been several instances where I have been able, where I have done that within certain departments. The next reason, lower workload. You know, it's just a lot going on in our city when we think about the phenomenal transformation the city is going through. I can tell you, there is a lot of work that comes with it, and that work doesn't just fall on police and fire. That work falls on all of the employees across the board. So when you have employees, long-term employees, who have gotten to the point where, for a lower workload, they will jump ship for the same money, then as your city administrator, I have to pause and see what is it we can do? Because we shouldn't be in those kind of situations. Related to that, it's less stress. You know, less stress. You know, when you're carrying the kind of workloads that employees are carrying, you know, they're looking for a better life-work balance. You know, and so to get out from up under some of the stress, you know, they are jumping ship. Where are they going? Some of the top attractors, and these are the top ones, not all, Boynton Beach, Rivera Beach, Palm Beach County, and into the private sector. Now, historically, governments have not been able to compete salary-wise with the private sector. Historically, counties tend to pay maybe a better pay with certain positions, but we should be able to compete with cities. We should be able to out-compete cities, but we can't because of where we are in the market. And that's not something that I think we should allow to continue as we look at West Palm Beach being the capital city, knowing that all that we have going on that outpaces, in a lot of respects, the development that we see in other cities. We should be able to out-compete other cities, and that's in my very humble opinion. So as I move on...
Ms. Johnson, before you move on, I just want to put it in context. I think my number is right. So the vacancies we have to date, as I've done my math, looking at the two hundred and thirty number, that's roughly thirteen percent of our workforce.
Yes, of this group.
Yeah, I mean, I just want that to sink in.
Yes.
You know, we are growing tremendously. It's an increased demand of our services, but we, thirteen percent of our workforce is not there.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And again, to just keep that laser-focused perspective, that's of this group. That does not include Fire and Police. So I don't want that to get lost on the board. That's just of this group. We pared out police and fire.
Well, it's probably a greater percentage, and I was looking at it as a percentage of seventeen ninety-two.
Yeah, it's just of this group.
Yeah, wow. Okay.
So moving...
Commissioner Producer.
Go right ahead.
I know this isn't part of the topic. Do we have the numbers of attrition for Fire and Police? Just to put in perspective, because we did elevate their pay and their market position, and I'm just wondering, how did that translate into keeping more of them here?
Right now, currently, app-to-app comparison, right now, within the group that we're talking about, the sixty-seven percent, we have two hundred and seven vacancies. With police and fire combined, right now, twenty-three vacancies, sworn officers. So I think we have been successful, you know, with what we were trying to achieve, you know, with the market adjustment. I think it has bared out, and if you talk to the police chief and the fire chief, and I think even if you talk to their sworn officers, they will tell you that it has made a tremendous difference. The police chief is very, very consistent when he has the awards or programs, or when he's swearing in new officers. He talks about the impact of the board's decision to give them the market adjustment that it has had on their recruitment efforts, their retention efforts. And I see Captain Clark back there nodding his head in agreement. And I think Fire, the fire chief, and their members would tell you the same. So we're hoping that we.
We have another question.
Go right ahead.
President Warren.
Hi, can you tell me if, did we increase the number of officers? For some reason, I'm believing that we increased the number of officers on the force.
Actually, we did. And I tend to mix it up, so you all correct me. We got a cops grant that I believe there was 30 new police officers on the cops grant. And then for fire, it was fire was a total of 39, because we bought on nine firefighters from the fire assessment fee. And then 30 from the grant. So a total of 39, and then 30 on police. And I may have those numbers off by one or two, but pretty close.
You got a follow-up?
Thank you very much. Would it be safe, then, to assume that we've increased the number of officers? If that number includes the increase in the amount in the department?
It is accurate that we increased the number of officers in police and number of firefighters in fire. My numbers may be off one or two, but we certainly increased them. And then the market adjustment as well.
Awesome. So the vacancies then reflect, it's actually, so we have more officers, we have more people on the street, ensuring that we have a safe environment, even though there are still 13 positions open.
There is a total between the two of 23 vacant right now, between the two groups. Between the two groups, there's a total of 23, between police and fire.
And an increase of, what was the total increase again?
Between the two groups, 39 and 30?
69.
So 69.
Okay.
Off maybe two or three positions. I'm talking off the top of my head, but I am pretty close. And I'm gonna ask staff to get to the research and get that exact number.
Commissioner Ward has a question.
Yes, and thank you for that. Because I would like to look at the total number of police, of how many we had. Because I think last week, they were still saying they were down 20 or 21. But I didn't really catch that we had had more in total. So I would like to know, like, what that increase was, or when that happened, of the total police force. My question was, you had the average days to fill vacancies about 84. What is the timeframe from when you receive an application to when they start usually? Like, how quickly do we onboard?
You know, that varies. You know, I would have to go through and kind of look at each position, or we would have to, to give you the average. And we have not yet done that. However, I will tell you that we try to fill positions as expeditiously as we can because we have such a high number of vacant positions. You know, we want to get folks onboard as quickly as we can. But I don't have that average from point A to then, when they actually come onboard. That average that we walk the board through relates to when we posted the position to the time that the person actually walked in the door. Okay, so there are some nuance in there, but we certainly can get that information back to the board. And let me just, one other footnote. While we try to do it as quickly and as expeditiously as we can, is that if you find qualified applicants, you don't want to have them hanging out there too long because other municipalities are snatching them up. You know, we have had a number of situations where we started out, when the applications were screened. We had maybe, let's say, six qualified applicants that we were gonna interview. By the time we got to the interview, three of them had taken jobs somewhere else. So you have to act quickly. But in even doing that, you got to be able to submit them with their offer. We've had situations where applicants have taken, have accepted the job before they actually started call. You know, I interviewed for another position before I interviewed and accepted this. When they called me back, they're offering me, you know, X number of dollars more, $1,000 more. I'm taking the other job. We have had situations where they have actually come onboard. And within that same week, another employer called them. They jumped ship within a week. You know, so those are the kinds of situations that we've been grappling with, just trying to stabilize the organization.
Okay, I don't see any other hands up. You can continue, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. So when we look at the actions taken to stop the talent bleeding, and this goes to my comment about why you're seeing a drop in the turnover rate between '23 and '22. And I hope the board will recognize all of these because you all have played a role in them when I get to the policy actions. So on the administrative side, we implemented a hybrid work structure. We know that now we're in a different type of work mode. You know, you got remote work. A lot of organizations are doing full remote work. Most municipalities are not on a full remote work. So we have a hybrid work structure where it's two to three days of remote work per week, dependent on the operation. We've been implementing new, higher starting salaries significantly above the minimum. Our practice had been where departments' directors are allowed to bring applicants or new employees in at 5% above the minimum. They can do that outright. If it's anything higher than the 5%, it requires my approval. And I will tell you, as a matter of fact, almost every position comes to me because we cannot retain or secure new employees at 5% above the minimum. So we've had a paradigm shift. I mean, we're getting to the point now where we're bringing in new employees pretty much close to the midpoint, and in some cases, above the midpoint. We've modified, we modified rather the minimum education requirements for certain positions. And this was primarily in public works as it relates to sanitation workers. We used to require a college degree. When we look at our competitors, competitors in the private sector, they don't require a college degree. So to be more competitive, we dropped that so that we would be in a better position to hire employees in sanitation. You know, we have been very, very concerned that if we did not get, or were able to keep employees picking up the garbage, that we were gonna find ourselves in a situation to a municipality south of us where the garbage just sat for a very long time because they could not keep employees to pick it up. We've enhanced the recruitment strategies. We used to just advertise positions within certain platforms. We broaden that to the greatest extent possible. We employed different types of recruitment techniques. Started using headhunters, which we typically don't do because there's a cost involved. But that's where we found ourselves. We have engaged and pan agencies for contract workers as opposed to just having them to come work for the city. If the director has identified the employee or the contract worker as meeting the standard that they would like to have in an employee, then we convert them. But there's a cost to that. And then to help with the workload, we modified the standard meetings that we have throughout the organization, starting with this. I don't know if the board will recall, but you used to have two work sessions a month. But now we have one, unless there is a particular need to have that second one. But as a matter of routine, we've gone from two to one work sessions. Our, the mayor's executive team meetings used to be four a month. The mayor has modified it to two a month, again, trying to allow for some relief with the workload. We have leadership team meetings. The mayor has one, I have one. They used to rotate on a bi-monthly basis. We now hold those quarterly, trying to give staff at least just some slither or more time to be at the desk doing the work. So we look at actions that we have brought before the board. On the policy side, the board has adopted personnel ordinance changes to increase the number of vacation days to bring them on par across the board because we had this sliding sort of a system in place. Depending on when you came onboard with the city, you accrued at a different rate. So we changed that where now everyone's accrual is on par, and they can accrue the same number of vacation days. The board, for this fiscal year, increased the pay ranges by 3%. And I've already articulated the 5% colas that the board approved. And that, yes. And moving right on, the board approved covering half of the employees, 11.5% premium increase for FY22. And then in FY21, the board approved covering the full 5.5% premium increase. And then you also approved, that has 42 new positions for this fiscal year. It was actually 52. So the board has been an integral part of our efforts to help deal with this situation that we have. And I want to thank you all for that support on the board's part. However, and that was somewhat of an exhaustive list of things that we have done. But we're at an inflection point because it's not enough. You know, our current reality, when we talk about the three groups, is that the employees continue to be overtaxed, underpaid, and our starting salaries continue to be below the market. I started out showing you the 8.8% below market, and then the 7.9% below for the starting salaries. So with as much as what we have done, we have still not been able to solve the issue that we have at hand. And as a result of that, and it's not for a lack of taking action, we are continuing to have significant recruitment, retention, workload, and morale challenges. And that's about as diplomatic as I can put it. Our current reality is that we have a workforce that is still overtaxed, underpaid, and our starting salaries are still below the market. As a result, we continue to have challenges with recruitment, retention, and with the workload. So what do we do about it? You know, we can't just sit and not address it. Here's why we can't. The actions that we've taken to date, simply not enough. We need a more dramatic impact to successfully address our retention, recruitment, workload, and morale challenges. Solving our legacy compensation issues is critical to our organization's health and its long-term stability. Now is the prime opportunity. We are at the last year of the SEIU and PMSA CBA. And as we negotiate the new CBA, I am strongly encouraging the board to continue the practice of what you do for SEIU and PMSA, you do for non-management employees. Another reason why is that we may not have the financial capacity to act in the future. Next year, we're back at the table with fire and police. And I don't want to be in a position of us trying to do what more we need to do to get fire and police really at the top of the market, if at all possible, because that's where I think they should be. And based on everything I've heard from the board, that's how I've interpreted, that you all want to see your public safety at the top of the market. I don't want to have to try to come up with a plan for that and then have a competing directive to try to address non-management, non-union employees. Lastly, kicking the can just cannot be a viable option. It cannot be a viable option. And again, that's in my very humble opinion. And I think you all will agree that sometime, I'm not humble.
Sorry. Choked up a little bit. Must need some more water.
Someone get the mayor some water. So let's talk about the plan. And I want to prepare the board that it's a significant ask because we have a significant problem. A small problem requires a small ask. A significant problem requires a significant ask. So the primary focus is non-management. And that includes SEIU, PMSA, and then that non-management group of the internal governance. The focus is on addressing the below-market salaries and the below-market pay ranges. So let's start with SEIU. And let me, don't jump ahead. The four features or strategies in the plan. One, a 5% across-the-board cola for all of the subject employees. Increasing our pay ranges by 7%. Market adjustments for SEIU, PMSA, and non-management. And then four is an exception that I'm going to talk the board through, a market adjustment for the group of employees that fall within management, too. And that's about 66 of those employees. I do want to preference that employees' eligibility to receive the market adjustment depends on where they are in their pay range. So we are proposing up to a 15% market adjustment. That does not mean automatically everyone will get it because if that 15% puts them at the max, then they can only, they can, if the 15% puts them at the max, they can get it. But if it puts them over, they cannot. So they can only get as much as their salary range will allow them, or salary grade will allow them. So if it turns out to be 10% or 9%, 12%, some of the employees will get the full 15%. So you're gonna see throughout the rest of the presentation an asterisk, but that's what the asterisk means. Secondly, if an employee is on probation October 1, they are not eligible for the 5% across the board or the market adjustment. So keep those two factors in mind. Not everyone will automatically receive a 15%. And not everyone would be eligible to receive that 5% in market adjustment. If they are on probation, they will not be able, or will not be eligible.
Before we move on, we got a few questions, Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
First, Commissioner Fox, and Commissioner Lambert, and Commissioner Ward.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to ask you a question about the salary grades that you just mentioned, that some won't get up to the 15% if they are gonna max out of their grade. So are you saying, for example, the grades that we have now, let's say, the range, the top of the range is still, I guess, above market rate? Just that some people haven't gotten to that? I'm confused about how are we determining what the salary grade is? If it's, if we're saying they can't go past what the salary grade is now, are we saying that the top of the salary grade that we're offering is above market rate?
Okay, let me, and Jose, I'll have you all to jump in. So right now, with where our pay ranges are, if we, if the board, if the ranges were to stay as they are right now, a significant number of the employees would not be able to benefit from the proposed market adjustment because the pay ranges are below the market. With the 7% increase in the pay ranges, it will allow a good number of the employees to now be able to benefit from the market adjustment. And if I didn't state that correctly, please correct me.
No, you are correct, Administrator Johnson. Jose Rodriguez, Assistant City Administrator. Once we, as part of this plan, it's all comprehensive and intertwined with each other. So if you approve the plan and you raise all of our current pay grades, pay ranges by 7%, two things will happen. We will be above market for our pay ranges instead of below. And pay range is not pay, just the range. But what that does is that. But what that does is that if you are a current employee that, for example, today is maxed out at the very top of the range, well, on October first, when that new maximum is seven percent higher, I now have the ability to receive the five percent cola and a portion of the market. Um, so it's, it's going to, you know, to benefit. And, and another related point, although prob- probationary employees will not be eligible for the cola, keep in mind that once they pass their six-month new hire probation, they get a five percent pay bump. So they will not be left out with no, uh, increase in pay after they pass a probationary period.
Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Lambert and Commissioner Ward.
Thank you. That was my same question, but just to clarify. So should we move forward with this? You are proposing that the increase in pay ranges of seven percent take place before the market adjustments?
Correct. It all takes place simultaneously.
Yeah, I was about to say, we, we will implement it simultaneously so that they do benefit.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Commissioner Ward.
And it's along the same line. So if there are some that are going to hit that max and not get there, are we gonna be then creating a new position so that they can attain the level that we would like to see them at as far as the market adjustments? Or how many, or, you know, do we know how many employees this might impact at, uh, at all?
Uh, we, we, we do. And, and if you can just pause that question, I'll, I'll get to it, make a note of it. So that if I don't, uh, uh, answer that, I will tell you that by design, let's just say hypothetically, there is one employee who doesn't get it, or five or ten, whatever that number happens to be, uh, that don't get, um, and I don't know if we have any that will not get anything, but let's just say hypothetically, if that were the case. The intent is not to then artificially expand the pay ranges so that we can address that small group of employees. Uh, unfortunately, there is no perfect system that will encapsulate everything. But this is about as near-perfect as we can get. And we don't want to unravel the integrity of how you set pay ranges and all of that. So certainly, we will keep an eye on that. But I think that by and large, uh, most, if not all of the employees are at least going to benefit from the five percent cola. And then varying degrees of the fifteen percent market adjustment. As we look at the different groups, I think that the higher number of employees that will get the total fifteen percent are going to be within the SEIU, PMSA, because the salaries in those particular groups are so low. So I'm gonna go through that and then we can pause and kind of make certain that we're addressing the question.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert, you had a question?
Thank you, I did. It was on a previous slide, um, slide ten. When you talked about the actions taken to stop the bleed, I'm, I was pleased to see that we looked at a number of, uh, ideas here and especially the one looking at our education requirements. I was curious if in that same realm, have we looked at, you know, being more creative or flexible with people's experience and backgrounds? I know just this past weekend, I was speaking with someone who worked in the private sector, who was very interested in working with the city. But she felt like our, uh, job descriptions requirements were so narrowly crafted that it excluded her. And she felt like she did have applicable experience. And when she was describing to me her, her background and experience, I, I tended to agree. But I didn't look at the exact job description she was applying for. I don't know if we've had those conversations as well.
In, in general, the way that we write job descriptions, we lay out, you know, the experience that we're seeking. But then we do, we put a clause in there that says, "or equivalent too." So we try to provide some allowance for being able to look at, uh, a applicant's background, you know, individually to see if, based on whatever their experience and background happens to be, if it translates into meeting the requirements. Now, an applicant looking at it on paper, they may make that determination themselves as opposed to submitting the application and allowing HR to look at it. But to the greatest extent possible, I mean, we're very flexible because we want to get qualified applicants. One of the other actions that we've taken, I know that we've had, uh, quite a bit of discussions and, and maybe brought just one, uh, request to the board, where, uh, we have, uh, talked about, uh, management or position trainees, you know, to try to build our workforce for that next level promotion, you know, if they don't have the requisite experience or, or, or background to just, uh, meet the requirements. Uh, so we, we have talked about and we've looked at a number of, of different things to try to help, you know, with this issue that we're grappling with.
Yes.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that, uh, um, extra information. I've realized that, obviously, we're in, we're not in a college situation. But when you were talking, it reminded me of a college situation that, um, I'm curious if we have something similar and, and, you know, when we're thinking outside of the box of actions to, to, to stop the bleed. But I remember at University of Florida, I worked in our career guidance office where some students could come in and say, hey, this is the classes I've taken. This is the volunteer or internships I've had. What kinds of jobs could I apply for? Do we have something similar to that where people, like this example, may come and say, gosh, I really want to work with the city. I, I love everything that's going on here. I believe in your mission. I'm not quite sure where I would fit. Is there somebody that they can come and talk to in the HR department that could help guide them and say, well, maybe if you worked two more years in this kind of scenario, then you could fit into this role?
Sylvia, I'll let you speak to that.
Hi, good morning. I'm Sylvia Grigoryan, Assistant Chief Human Resources Officer. We have cases when applicants has contacted the HR department recruitment and some of the recruiter has helped them and guided them. I personally have met with some applicants, actually, and seen their resumes and guided them what jobs they can apply. Last year, we did a career fair at Gaines Park. And basically, we have a lot of people that came and contacted, met with us individually. And we tell them jobs that can apply. But if someone has that question, they can come to HR. One of the recruiters can assist them with that process. We had done that before.
President Ward.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say thank you very much because I know that we talk about this probably at least monthly. So, um, this is a tremendous amount of work that has gone into, um, this proposal, this presentation thus far. Can you tell me, um, I, because I have a couple of questions. Do you, do you plan to break out, um, on slide number fifteen, uh, the, the market adjustments and, uh, for bullet point number three? Do you plan to identify those, those categories further as we continue this conversation this morning?
Yes.
You do. Thank you. And do we know what the current AMI is for, for West Palm Beach?
Yeah, I, I need to just make sure I'm understanding that.
Curious. Do we know, do we know what the current, um, median income is in the area?
Come, come through the microphone. Here, here you go.
I'm kind of going off memory, but it's approximately between sixty, I'm sorry, Armando Fons, Assistant City Administrator. It's approximately sixty-five to sixty-seven thousand for a family of three.
And Ms. Ferriero, if you're watching, uh, get us the actual number, please. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Ward.
I, I just wanted to piggyback on Commissioner Lambert's comment because I think, I know I've talked to you about this, but I didn't want to forget it, just thinking about colleges. I know that you all, I think in the mayor's office have an intern, um, this summer. I, you know, we, we can't find a bunch of people right away. But I know that I got so much experience from my, my college internships and was super helpful because I wanted to know things. And so I really hope that we also, while we're looking at all this, and I think this is fantastic, that we're looking at targeting some of these universities and creating internships that base off of college credits. That way, they're getting college credits, we're getting the experience, and that we have that system in place because I think it's huge. And, and, you know, it can span so many different departments based upon what that person is utilizing for their education.
I, I agree, Commissioner Ward. You know, I got my start in government through an intern, uh, internship, uh, in the city manager's office. And that is, uh, something that is not lost, uh, on us. We have allowed, uh, different operations. You know, if they are able to take on an intern, you know, because of, you know, right now workload and the number of vacancies, not all departments can devote the time, you know, to bring an intern on board. But certainly, you know, when we get to where we're going to get to, uh, on the other side of this, uh, matter, uh, then I think we would certainly be in a covenant position to look at a formalized internship program. Because it's just so, uh, much, uh, value and benefit that comes out of that on both sides.
City Attorney.
Uh, yes, I can tell you for certain, the city attorney's office has worked with several of the universities for their second year, third year law students. And we have had intern opportunities for them either voluntarily or in exchange for credits. And we work with the career department of the particular university and outline what they will learn and what they will gain by virtue of that internship. We also have opportunities coming up in the future with the League of Cities and some others who are going to provide funding so that we can have some paid internship opportunities. And I believe there are a few other departments, perhaps engineering, who has some internship opportunities. But that, for our department at least, we do.
Fantastic. Thank you.
And we'll look at that on a more comprehensive basis, uh, at appropriate times. Great idea. Any other questions before we move on? Okay, Ms. Johnson, you could proceed.
Thank you. So again, starting with SEIU and PMSA, uh, we began, uh, negotiations on a new collective bargaining, uh, agreement back in, uh, February of this year. So everything that is, uh, we presented our proposal to them, uh, last month, uh, in June. So those negotiations are still underway. Everything that's presented to the board is based on the city's proposal. And we have to limit how far we can go in talking about the proposal and all for SEIU and PMSA because it's subject to union negotiations. And I want to make certain that we don't cross that line, uh, here. So please keep that, uh, in mind. Uh, we are in the midst of union negotiations and hope that we will have negotiations wrapped up by the time we present, uh, the tentative budget, uh, to the board. So with that, when we talk about SEIU and PMSA, what are we talking about? Uh, in terms of positions, uh, again, this, uh, area of focus is our quality life, quality of life operations. So on the SEIU side, you know, those are an, uh, a sample of the positions that fall within the SEIU job classifications. Not all of them, uh, just a sample of the positions. And as the, uh, board will note, uh, a number of the positions within SEIU, you know, are very difficult and sometimes dangerous, uh, uh, work that's involved. Uh, however, they are absolutely, uh, necessary to have the level of quality of life that we offer our residents. Uh, on the PMSA side of the operation, here's a sample of the positions that fall within PMSA. Again, not all of the positions, but a sample of the positions. Our way of function. Again, these positions are our employees that pick up the garbage, pick up debris, repair our roads, re- repair potholes, maintain our parks, engage in, uh, trimming of the trees. They're involved in all of our, uh, public events, taking care of the, uh, water, protecting, uh, grassy water, uh, providing various programs and services at our library. So here's the proposal. By just starting out again, footnoting the current situation we have with the two union, uh, groups, eight point one eight percent below the market. The turnover rate is down from fifteen percent in FY twenty-two to eight percent, uh, in FY twenty-three. So the goal of administration is to bring the average pay, uh, above the fifty percentile in the market. So when you, if you can visually, visually think about the percentile, you know, that fifty percentile would be right in the middle. We want to be more competitive than right there at market. So that is why we are proposing an up to a fifteen percent market adjustment. Because we don't want to be right at the middle of the market. We want to bring our pay higher than the market to give us a competitive edge. So the proposal for SEIU and PMSA, that five percent cola, increasing the pay ranges and then the up to the fifteen percent market adjustment. If we were to, uh, bring them at market from that eight point two percent below rounded, it would be about, uh, a four point five percent market adjustment that would be proposed. But again, we're proposing up to fifteen percent because we want to be better than the midpoint in the market. If the board were to approve the proposal, it would go from the eight point two percent, uh, below market to seven point nine or rounded eight percent above market. Now, in terms of, just bear with me, I think I got footnotes here. Uh, in terms of the percentage of employees that would receive, uh, the entire fifteen percent, again, I mentioned that the majority of them would because they are so low in the, on the pay scale. About eighty-one percent of SEIU employees would receive the full fifteen percent. And then with PMSA, about seventy-two percent. So the majority of the employees would receive the full fifteen percent. And the balance of them, it will vary, you know, something less than that.
Commissioner Beduzzi and then Commissioner Ward.
Thank you. So with that kind of increase, the fifteen percent market adjustment, the five percent cola, um, and the pay range it only being increased seven percent, will there be many more positions that are approaching than the top of that pay range?
Yes.
Where it will need to be adjusted again, I would assume sometime in the very near future?
Well, we will, we will adjust it depending on what the market does. So conceivably, uh, we are anticipating that the pay range will need to be adjusted. However, unless directed otherwise, I don't intend to just propose to the board to adjust the pay range because we have, you know, a large, the lion's share of employees at or near the top. I think I would prefer to have them at or near the top as opposed to the current situation at or near the bottom. And so again, at some point, I think the market will dictate that. But not just, uh, unilaterally, will we just come and say, well, because now we have corrected the, uh, pay situation, we got the lion's share of employees near or at the max, then we should artificially move the range so that they will continue, you know, to get the cola. What will happen in that circumstance is that they would, on the cola side, because I don't envision proposing another market adjustment if the board were to approve this one. But on the cola side for the ensuing year, they would then get it incrementally. Uh, they would, uh, it would not increase their salaries, but they would get it paid out in lump sum over a number of pay periods. So they would still benefit from getting a cola, uh, not as part of their salary if they're at the top of the market. And that's how we do it now. So we are not looking to change that.
Follow-up, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, so that answered a question that I had before, but I thought it was previously answered. So if you're at the top of your pay range, you're still benefiting from the full five percent of cola when we've given it?
Yes.
Uh, okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Ward and then President Ward. Commissioner Ward, and then President Warren.
Just to clarify, we've talked about other municipalities in the private sector as well. That market, like what we are above market, is that comparison, private and other cities? Are you just creating the market? What's your definition of the market that you're?
Our market is based on municipalities, not the private. We didn't factor the private sector in.
Okay, so it's just municipal, where we would then be above other municipalities by close to eight percent?
Yes, in terms of above the fifty percentile. That's how the, the salaries are looked at, not just outright. You know, each municipality looks at all of the municipalities within their market. And so you got, you know, the fifty percentile is sort of like at that midpoint of all of the pay ranges. And they kind of shoot, you know, as a typical goal, you want to be right there along with, you know, the midpoint. Some of them shoot that they want to be leading, you know, and then some, because of financial circumstances, they are where they are, which has been our case. So we want to do better than just having our employees right there in the middle of the pack. We want to have a competitive edge and bring them even above the middle of the pack in terms of the percentile ranks.
President Warren, and then Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. I think that this could be a pretty complicated perspective. But when I'm, when I'm looking at the fifteen percent market adjustment, and I'm, and I'm thinking about the employees that are at the lowest tier of our salaries that we pay here, they're still only going to receive the smallest amount of an increase, correct?
I think there are two ways to look at that. Those who are at the lowest echelon of the pay should receive really the full twenty percent because they are so low right now that based on the increase in the pay ranges, theoretically, they should be able to, within their pay grade, absorb the five percent COLA and then the fifteen, the full fifteen percent market adjustment. So theoretically, I think, and we'll have to look at the data, and you all can, can jump in afterwards, they would get theoretically the entire twenty percent. However, when you start looking at dollar for dollar, you know, because of where their pay is situated, then certainly it's going to translate into maybe a lesser or lower dollar amount. Let's say theoretically, it may translate into fifteen thousand for them, but someone else whose pay is already higher, you know, whatever their COLA and market adjustment, it may translate into seventeen thousand. But they may not have gotten the full twenty percent. So it just depends on how you look at it. But for those who are at the lower echelon of the pay scale, theoretically, they should benefit from the entire twenty percent, the five percent COLA and the full fifteen percent market adjustment. So it's a huge boost to their salary.
You got a follow-up?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I am very excited to hear this, and I want all of our employees to be paid at the top of the market. And so this is very exciting. But I did have a question, just a little bit about the specifics. When I'm looking at some of these jobs, let's say tree trimming or public events, library programs, I don't know how much everyone makes. I'm not trying to pick anyone in particular. But how are we determining, I guess, that we are, that they are all going to be given a market adjustment? I mean, these are a lot of different, a lot of different jobs that, how do we know, like, let's say that one, one group? I mean, are we going literally job by job and looking at the market? Or are we just saying kind of generally? Because there's just a lot of different categories of jobs here. And so I just want to make sure that it's fair for everyone. Like, if one job is twenty percent below market rate and the other one is ten percent, I mean, how are we determining that so that we know that each specific job is, is getting the adjustment that is needed?
So, and, and starting out, we looked at all of the job classifications within each group, all of the jobs. And based on the data, running the data on all of our salaries and then comparing that to the market, that's how we came up with the fact that we're eight point two percent below the market. That includes all of the jobs within those two categories. So when you get to now the five percent COLA and the fifteen percent market adjustment after we have increased the pay ranges, then now it goes to an individual job by job basis in terms of where their actual pay is. So based on where each person's pay currently is after we get to October 1 and looking at that, it will determine, first of all, all of them will get the five percent, all of them. And then on an individual by individual by employee basis, we will then determine how much of the fifteen percent they would be able to get. So again, based on their pay grade and range, they may, and as I said, theoretically, get all of the, the entire fifteen percent. What the data has shown us from loading it up into the system where we have all of the salaries, you put in the formula for the fifteen percent, it tells us that, as I said, and let me repeat, for SEI, SEIU, eighty-one percent of the employees within SEIU will get the full fifteen percent after the five percent. So now that's twenty percent for those employees, twenty percent. We've already loaded it into the system. For PMSA, having already loaded the data into the system, what it shows us is that after the five percent, seventy-two percent of everyone in PMSA will get the full fifteen percent. And then it'll vary from there. Jose, go right ahead.
Assistant City Administrator, Jose Rodriguez. Just to draw up, an additional point to address your concern, you're going to see later in the presentation that we have split the market averages by group. So we're talking now just about SEIU and PMSA and, and, and non-union groups being a specific percent below the market. We did not include in the calculations for SEIU, PMSA, and the non-union positions. We did not include the higher-paid positions that are professional positions in Management Two and professional positions in Management One because, of course, that would skew the data. They have their own market calculation with their own separate compensation adjustment, market adjustment recommendation. So this will address the lowest paid, the lowest paid groups first and make a recommendation there. And then we move to the second group. And then when we load everything, and if you approve our, the proposal, when we go in on October 1st, HR will then go employee by employee in SEIU and PMSA and determine, you know, do they get the full fifteen percent? Do they have to get less because they're maxed out? Do they not qualify because they're probationary employees? So those two things that will affect whether they get the full fifteen percent will be done in back of the house, so to speak, in, on October 1st.
Well, let me just footnote. Now, we've already preliminarily run the data.
Right.
And the data tells us, so I don't want, I want to just clear that up. We've preliminarily loaded up the system and have run the data. And what the system has calculated is that specifically for SEIU, eighty-one percent of all SEIU employees will get the full fifteen percent. Now, it's a given they're going to get the five percent COLA. So that's a twenty percent increase in one year. Having preliminarily loaded up the system, what the system has told us is that seventy-two percent of all PMSA employees will get the full fifteen percent market adjustment. It's a given that they're going to get the five percent COLA. So now that's twenty percent increase for seventy-two percent of employees within PMSA. We've already done the preliminary run. We're not waiting until October 1 because we needed to know, you know, where we would potentially land, you know, if the board were to approve this. So if it were not going to accomplish the goal to get the majority of the employees above the market, the board would be seeing a very different proposal in front of you today.
Any follow-up? Any other questions before we proceed? President Warren.
For people that may be tuning in, Madam Administrator, can you tell us all what SEIU and PMSA stand for? What, what are those acronyms?
I'm gonna let, I got acronyms in my head, and I don't want to mess that up. Go right ahead, Sylvia, please.
PMSA means Professional Managers and Supervisors Association. SEIU is Service Employees International Union. Association, yes, that's what it means.
Go right ahead, sure.
You were talking about percentages, and so to give you an idea, out of six hundred and twenty-two employees in SEIU, only seventy-eight employees would get less than a fifteen percent. Out of one hundred and ninety PMSA, only forty-five would less, get less than the fifteen percent market adjustment. So that tells that majority of our employees are getting the full, as Ms. Johnson said, the full fifteen percent market adjustment. So just giving numbers and their percentages, that's the way I look at them.
And then just to give the board further perspective, and I know, again, police and fire are not part of the discussion, but we are taking a similar approach. I think we're being very consistent with the market adjustments for police and fire. Not everyone got that full amount. They, they divvied up the, the, the money based on the nuances within their members. But here, again, to the greatest extent possible, the majority of the employees are going to benefit from the full twenty percent when you take the five percent COLA and the fifteen percent market adjustment together, the full twenty percent.
Okay, any other questions before we proceed? All right, Ms. Johnson.
And again, I just want to underscore, because we are in negotiations, both unions have the same option that police and fire had to reshuffle the deck. And if they were to do that, the market placement may change. It may be lower than that. That eight percent above market placement is based on the city's proposal and the, and it's staying as is and the board approving it. But certainly, if, however, they, or rather not, they reshuffle it, that may change, and that will be pointed out to the board when we get to presenting the CBA. But I just want to footnote that. Now, moving right along.
And that proposal has already been presented to the union, so we're just waiting on their response, correct?
Yes, actually, we have the next session tomorrow and then one on Friday.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Fox?
Sorry, can I ask one question? I know that we're talking a lot about the market adjustment for the employees that we already have, but we, when we look at the pay range that we're increasing by seven percent, how will it be determined if we have a new applicant coming in? How will it be determined if they can be hired at the top of the range or not?
Well, I would tell you, it's very, very rare that we're going to hire right out the gate at the top of the range. So in terms of how we would determine where they would be bought in, it depends on a number of factors. Certainly, let's just say, you know, based on experience and background, that's going to determine where you begin with each applicant. Because if you got someone that's, say, with fifteen years, you're in a different pay structure as opposed to someone with five years. So that's the starting point. Now, given that the pay ranges are going to be increased, so they're going to start out with a higher base. And then from there, depending on where their salary is when they are negotiating the position and all, we will determine, you know, it, it's sort of a, a, a negotiation. Hopefully, now with the city being able to lead the negotiations as opposed to employees, because we're being a better position. But theoret, in practice, theoretically, again, directors have been allowed to do the five percent above the minimum. And then anything above the five percent comes to me. We will continue that process here. And then it, it just depends on, that's very individualized. It's on an individual by individual basis. However, with all of that being said, we want to bring employees in at an appropriate salary where we feel, we are confident that we're going to be able to then keep them within the organization, and they won't be here for a week or two and then jump ship and we're starting all over again. So we probably have seen the last of the days where you're bringing employees in, new employees in at the minimum or five percent above because that has just not been effective.
Any other questions? Okay, proceed.
Okay, well, we've just finished with that. I'll move on to the next group. Now, we, just for the purpose of the presentation, we're calling this group Nonmanagement. But formally, they are categorized as confidential employees, unclassified, and then part-time. And you see, that's where we have the administrative assistants, the executive admin assistants, the commission aides, fiscal analysts, HR analysts, and, and the likes. We included the part-time positions in library and parks because those positions are heavily relied on by those two departments to be able to keep their services going. In parks, because of the shortages of parks, rec specialists, we have to pare down the number of summer camps that we're able to offer because they, those part-timers get the fifteen dollars per hour. And so if we don't include them as part of this plan, we're going to continue to have that challenge with not being able to get parks and rec specialists. I think lifeguards fall within that category as well as library pages. So as part of this, we would move that fifteen dollar per hour for our part-timers positions to seventeen dollars per hour. And that should help with the challenges of being able to get individuals in those positions. So with that, the same proposal, given our practice, to do for this group what is done for SEIU and PMSA. It's the same proposal. But if you look at the turnover rate, you can see in FY22, this group had the highest turnover rate of twenty-eight percent. Because of all of the various measures and actions that have been taken, we have brought the turnover rate down to fourteen percent. But that's still a very high turnover rate. And so we are optimistic that as we continue to work on the challenge that we're going to be able to stabilize that group and get that turnover rate down to a much, much lower number. We had the same goal, again, the same proposal for that group of employees. And in terms of what the preliminary load of the data, there is seventy-nine percent of this group will get the full fifteen percent market adjustment on top of the five percent COLA, therein a full twenty percent bump in pay.
Any questions? Okay.
Okay, so now, moving right on. This is where their plan sort of makes an exception in terms of its focus. Again, we were looking at the primary focus to address the below-market situation. But we have an exception that we want to discuss with the board because it is included in the proposed plan, and that is for Management Two. If you look back at your breakout of the FTEs, this is about sixty-six employees. Again, by functional area, they fall under the internal governance. This is employees that you don't see on the front line, but they provide critical functions here within the city. And I've listed a sample of those positions. And I've listed a sample of those positions. Again, not all 66, but you have a representative sample of the positions that fall within management two. Why the exception? Management two, we have some unique conditions that exist within this category of employees, which has caused us to recommend a market adjustment for them. We continue to have a chronic high turnover rate within management two while we have made progress from getting it down from 17% in FY '22 to 12% in FY '23. For the critical functions that this group of employees perform, a 12% voluntary turnover rate is untenable from my perspective. This is the group of employees that we have competing municipalities going after. It's almost like they're picking off this group of employees because they are the most difficult to fill positions. So by reputation, if you are known to an individual in another municipality that you are a star performer, unsolicited, you get pursued, you know, to jump ship. And we've had that to happen. This group, we, because of those challenges, just in general, we have to offer significant, higher starting salaries to replace them. When we looked at the data, the salaries have been up to 40% above the minimum and then verging on to the midpoint. So that tells us that, you know, we got to address the situation with management two. Again, because of what we have happening with this group of employees, we're having to incur upfront expenses to recruit individuals within management two, hiring of headhunters. The headhunter fee is $31,000 to find someone, you know. And we're hoping now that we're going to be able to fill the position that we're currently using a headhunter for. We do finally have nine qualified applicants in this position that we're utilizing it for. I think it's been vacant well over, or close to, a year and a half. With the personnel agencies, we're paying one of two fees, not both, one or two fees. A finder's fee, if, in the same context that a headhunter find applicants, they find an applicant, there's a 25% of that salary for a finder's fee. If they find applicants, whatever the salary for that position, they charge you 25% of it. And in the case where we're using it, I think that's going to be about $28,000, somewhere in that ballpark. The other fee that we may incur is that if they have an applicant that under our contract, we bring them onboard and then we want to convert them from a contract worker to a city employee, there is a conversion fee. And that's $25,000. I think it's wiser for us to rectify the salary situation we have and put it in our employee's salary rather than having to incur the upfront expenses to find them and then have to bring them in at a much higher salary over the mid, minimum or the midpoint. So we're getting hit on the front end just to find them. We're getting hit on the back end to then be able to house them within the organization. So it's a double hit here as we look at management two.
Before you leave, Commissioner Beduzzi has a question.
Yeah, I just have a quick question on that. The hiring of the headhunter, it says around $31,000. Is that inclusive of the finder's and the conversion fee?
No, 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 two different. So a headhunter is just one recruitment initiative, separate and apart from a local personnel agency. So the headhunter typically is a national firm that we're using because we got to throw out a broader net to try to get applicants for these very, very technical positions that a local personnel agency typically don't have candidates. So we're using both. We're getting hit with a headhunter for certain recruitments. And then locally, where we're using personnel agencies, we're paying either the finder's fee or the conversion fee. I do want to footnote that on the conversion fee, if the individual does not work out, does not pass probation, we do not have to incur that fee. But the fact that we are going to propose to hire them, you know, we're doing that on the basis that they have demonstrated to a high degree they're going to work out. So we're billing in that we're going to incur that $25,000 conversion fee.
Thank you. Still a quick follow up?
Yes.
So the hiring of the headhunter would be a total fee of approximately $31,000 per employee that's recruited, but there wouldn't be any conversion fee or anything like that?
That's correct.
You're hiring them to find that person. And then the personnel agencies I'm familiar with from hiring temps. And I'm familiar with the conversion fee. And, you know, that makes it difficult sometimes. You have the opportunity to see how someone works, but you also have to say, are they worth it enough to pay that big conversion fee upfront? So that, you know, so I would agree that if we could put that, those monies into the salaries, that in the long run, it would probably be most beneficial to our employees in our strategy.
Yes, and I want to assure the board that, you know, we very, very carefully, you know, decide when we're going to incur that fee. That's not something that we just do as a matter of routine. Let's say we have the 66 positions or if there are 10. But we use that for the hardest of the positions that we need to fill. So we're talking about positions that we have been trying to fill for a year and a half, highly specialized, very technical. The local market just has not produced qualified candidates. And because we have staff that is doubling up on the work because the work is getting done. The work is getting done. We don't have the luxury to say, you know, if a position is vacant, okay, the work gets parked and it doesn't get done. I can tell you, there's a gentleman in the middle of the table who will not accept that. So the work gets done. It gets done by other individuals, but that's where employees being overtaxed comes into play because they're doubling up on duties.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Johnson, proceed. Thank you.
So again, this is an exception because when you look at where the salaries for the management two employees, they are 8% above the market. However, based on the circumstances that continue to exist, that market standing is not competitive enough due to the unique conditions that we find ourselves grappling with. So our goal for management two is to bring them above the 65th percentile, not right at the middle. We need to set a higher bar if we're going to be able to mitigate or solve the issue with management two. So again, we're recommending the COLA, the increase in the pay range, and then the up to the 15% of the market adjustment. And for them, it's really individualized based on each department. It's not just a standard market adjustment across the board. So what we did was we looked within each department. We went through every single department, looked at their management two employees, looked at a couple of factors, where that management two employee's salary stood as it compared to their supervisor, whatever tier that supervisor happened to be. We looked at that individual's professional experience. We looked at, we did a peer review, looking at all of the managers across that department and then any similar managers across departments. And then we looked at a position, scope, or responsibility and determined what would be the appropriate market adjustment within each department. So the market adjustment for management two is department-centric. After we came up with that proposal, we sat with each department director individually and presented the plan to them. Some directors, based on nuances within their departments, they made some tweaks because they are in the best position to then put the fine points on what is the appropriate level of market adjustment. And then the plan was finalized. So again, it is very department-centric. It is tailored to a department-specific circumstance. The department directors have weighed in and we think that we have a very good overall plan for management two that will go to the heart of some of the existing unique conditions to help us get past them and get those positions filled.
Any questions? Commissioner Fox.
Thank you so much. I would imagine that these management positions are leading directly to our director position. So it's imperative that we keep them. And I see that the high turnover rate might be making that difficult. But I'm going back to how it's department-centric. I'm just concerned, I certainly don't want to overlook anybody. So is there going to be, you know, if some directors think that the managers aren't needing a pay raise, you know, I would think the employees might see things differently. So I'm wondering if there's any opportunity for the employees to also be involved or to, you know, I just want to make sure that we're not overlooking anyone.
I can assure you, Commissioner Fox, that no one is being overlooked. The level of time and attention with going through each department, each department, and then each position within the management two category, and coming up with administratively the proposal, and then sitting with directors to then have them to weigh in on what administration was proposing and allowing them to tweak it. So I am confident that no one is being overlooked, but there's always a but. And the but is that there may be one or two employees who, based on the various factors that we looked at, the director's input, from their perspective, they may want or feel, I should get the 15% wherein you, the plan recommends that I get 12%. I think that's their prerogative. But as your administrator, I have to be guided by data and certain factors. I can't personalize or individualize a plan that is going to address everyone's preference to get the highest salary right out the gate. I think I would be doing a disservice to the board. And certainly, it would not be financially advisable to do that. So in the big scheme of things, when you think about the number of employees, let's just say in this particular instance, 66 employees. If we have two that then complain, and I'm going to be shocked, but that happens. If we have two that complain, you know, well, everyone else got 15% and I got 12%, I think we've done a yeoman's job and we've accomplished the goal. So we may have, we may have the outliers who are going to complain. There is, there is no perfect, there's just no perfect situation.
Yes, Commissioner.
Sorry, I was in no way meaning, I think you've done an amazing job with this and I think this is fantastic. Just sometimes, you know, in the private sector, what I'm used to, there have been times I have myself have asked for a raise, you know, that sometimes the employees participating in our kind of ranges are a little different. So I was just curious if there was opportunities. But we'll just assume everything is going to work out well. So thank you so much for that.
And please don't take my passion to mean that you were intimating anything. You know, I just have to, I have to underscore and make the points here about what may or may not happen, but to underscore the effort that has gone into trying to prevent a situation where you have a good number of employees who were left out. And then, you know, there may be one or two situations where we missed the mark and then we have to come back and make those adjustments. You know, wherever and whenever that's done, I'm going to be the first one to say, okay, we got it wrong here, so we need to correct that. And I think that that's the responsible thing to do. So I'm not intimating that you are suggesting anything at all.
Any other questions before we move on? Okay, proceed, Ms. Johnson.
Okay, so last group of employees, management one. And we, for all practical purposes, what we do for management one, we treat the mayor's top staff in the same manner. And for this group of employees, which include myself on down to the various other positions within the two combined categories, we're only recommending the 5% COLA. The increase in the pay range is understood that that will happen. If you look at where this group, management one, current situation is right now, 6% for rounding talking purposes above the market. That this group has been the most stable group of employees within the city. It represents about 1% of our employees, so it is the very top tier of pay echelon within the city. The data, and based on conditions, does not warrant a market adjustment. So again, this group would receive the 5% COLA.
Any questions? Commissioner Beduzzi.
Just a quick question. We usually don't talk about this, but just for the public's edification and for our edification here, do the elected officials automatically get any increases, like a 5% COLA? Are we included in those things?
You know, that's a good question and I was remiss for not mentioning that at the beginning. The elected officials, the commissioners, and the mayor are completely excluded from all of this.
Thank you, that's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm that.
But that does not mean it can come up, it can't come up for conversation. There was, I guess about 11 years ago, I think was the last time increases were made to the elected officials' compensation. And that does not mean it can't be something that is teed up. Yes.
Thank you. And I just think it's important for the public to know that as elected officials, we aren't included in this, you know, these automatic pay increases or cost of living adjustments. And as the mayor's pointed out, it's been, you know, a number of years since that's been, you know, looked at.
You're correct, Commissioner Beduzzi.
Any other questions on this point? Okay, proceed, Ms. Johnson.
All right, moving right on. So by recap, that's the breakout of the FTEs by employee group, the current market placement, and the turnover rate. By recap, the same group of employees, by FTE breakout, the compensation proposal, and then the end result if it were to be approved by the board. Again, in terms of the four features or strategies in the plan, the 5% COLA, increase in the pay ranges by 7%, up to a 15% market adjustment for SEIU, PMSA, and non-management, and then up to a 15% market adjustment for management two. So winding down in closing, the rationale. the rationale for why the board support is being requested. As I indicated earlier in the presentation, the various policy and administrative actions taken to date have simply not been enough to solve the issue at hand. We need there to be a more dramatic impact to be successful in addressing our retention, recruitment, workload, and morale challenges. Solving, not mitigating, the legacy compensation issues, you know, is critical to our organization's health and its long-term stability. Now is the prime opportunity. We may not have the future financial capacity to do so, particularly given next year, we're at the table on the next FOP, IAF, collective bargaining agreement. As I indicated before, from my perspective, kicking the can down the road is not and should not be a viable option. The plan that I presented to you is financially feasible. The cost of it is rolled into the proposed FY '24 balanced budget, which we're going to go over the highlights next. If it were to be approved, it would be the first ever across-the-board market adjustment for the impacted groups. In turn, implementation-wise, it will enhance our market competitiveness. It will increase our ability to attract qualified applicants. I also want to point out that the plan includes an upgrade of 50 pay grades. 29 of those are in development services, and the pay grade increases for development services are to bring those very hard technical positions in building in line with pay grades with Miami-Dade because that's their benchmark municipality. It would raise the hourly minimum pay for our part-time employees from $15 an hour to $17 an hour. And I think overall, it would effectuate a citywide compensation restructuring. In terms of the next steps, administration will finalize the union negotiations with SEIU and PMSA. Then, once that is done, it will come before the commission for ratification, and we're projecting sometime in the August-September timeframe. The proposed pay plan would be presented on the consent calendar sometime in September, and certainly that can be on the regular agenda at the board's preference. The board would be presented the budget for adoption in September. We would then, in October, go into implementation of the compensation changes. And throughout the fiscal year, we will continue our ongoing monitoring and managing of the recruitment, retention, and workload and morale issues here within the organization. So board, if all of that were to be, we would have completely restructured the city's compensation system. And that would be where we would end up in terms of the market placement. Again, FOP right now is in third place as opposed to second. Fire maintains its position in ninth. SEIU, PMSA would be 7.9 or 8% above the 50 percentile. The non-management would follow suit with 8% above the 50 percentile. Management two would be 14% above the 65th percentile. And management one will continue to carry the day and hold its place with being 6% above the 50 percentile. And with that, I want to, before we wrap up, I want to make certain that I end by thanking you, Mayor, and the commissioners. I know this has been a lot. I want to again thank Sylvia and Jose for all of their hard work, the legwork with putting all of the data crunching together, as well as the department directors for their input on the plan for their individual department as it relates to management two. Take any wrap-up questions or discussion?
Commissioner Ward? Commissioner Lambert?
I want to start by just saying thank you. I think this is phenomenal. And I know that I've been commissioner of the shortest amount of time, but it is frustrating to continue to say, you know, hold on, we don't have enough people on this, and we're trying to work hard. And, you know, like what you had said about, we can't just put work to the side. Or, you know, as an attorney, I can say, oh, I can't take any more clients. We can't do that. And so I think this is really important, and not only just to boost morale, but to fill in those vacant positions and keep good people from leaving. It's really heartbreaking to see when somebody loved their job and they're leaving because, hey, they can just get paid more elsewhere. And so thank you so much for this. I think this is phenomenal. I just had one question. Who sets, just curiosity, the probationary period to six months? Has ever been discussed at all making that like three months, for instance?
Commissioner, the probationary period is set actually by ordinance. And that's a standard practice. A lot of places actually have longer probationary periods of a year. But ours is six months. It's set by ordinance. And then, in the case of SEIU and PMSA, it's repeated in their collective bargaining agreements.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I also wanted to say thank you so much. This was not only extremely informative, but it was just presented in a way that was very digestible, very easy for us to understand. I thought it prompted some really great dialogue, so thank you for that. And clearly, Mayor, you and your staff have put a lot of time and effort into thinking about the best way forward. And I think we've all been hearing lately, you know, maybe over the past year, just the effects of not having those 230 staff in those positions. In fact, last night, I was emailing with a resident, and at 8 o'clock this morning, she wrote me and said, Christina, not having sufficient staff in these departments has severely delayed progress and will affect the reputation of West Palm Beach. And so I think that we are putting together a plan, and, you know, I certainly can get behind it, and just want to say thank you for that. I did have one question that came to mind when we were talking about the headhunters and recruitment and the fees that were paying them. I know that in the private sector, a lot of times, there's also incentives given to internal staff who maybe recruit their friends to come and work here, and that they're benchmarks so that if that individual stays a year, you know, there's maybe a fee given if they are recruited and hired, and then another fee given if they stay a year. And typically, they're a fraction of what we pay headhunters. Do we have anything like that here in the city?
We don't. And I know we looked at incentive pay in terms of recruiting, and I thought that there were some legal challenges with being able to do that. I'm going to ask the city attorney to speak to.
And I'm going to go from memory, so I'll get back with you on the exact statute. But you can only pay employees, my recollection, for work performed as opposed to bonuses or incentives by statute. So, but I'll look at it and see whether there's any room in there or not.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I'm really excited about this. I think when I first started, we were working on the police and fire unions, and they had given us specifically the numbers and how they were below market rate. And, you know, I've never understood how it was for the rest of, you know, the city staff because I wasn't presented with the same numbers. So I'm just very happy that we're able to make everyone more competitive. My question is, if we have 230 vacancies right now, and assuming, you know, this, we move forward with this, and these positions will all be paid a different range than they are, I guess, being advertised now, do we just re-advertise those jobs? Or I just want to make sure that we're, you know, communicating the fact that this will be, our benefits will be different, and, you know, that we're going to be more competitive so that maybe someone that looked at a job once and didn't think it was for them might be able to know now that they can, will be paid more.
So right now, the 230 was the peak number of vacancies we had at one time. Right now, it's 207, and that fluctuates depending, you know, on what happens on a daily basis. But for positions that are advertised, I'm going to yield to HR in terms of, because we can't advertise a new salary until it's actually approved by the board. I don't know if we have the flexibility to somehow indicate, you know, what's to come, but I'll let you speak to that.
One of the things that we do, if we have, now that we know if it's going to be proposed, we can tell the applicants they may be changes in October 1st. When this come effective in October 1st, we go ahead and change, update every single recruitment that is open to reflect the new pay grade and salary range. We do that. But right now, we have applicants that have, we offer jobs to them. We sell everything that we can sell for the city, from the clinics to the benefits. And we mentioned there's a proposed change in October. We don't tell them exactly what it's going to be, but at least we tell them something's coming forward that sometimes make an applicant make the decision to come to us and work with us.
Yeah, but even in those circumstances, they wouldn't be able to participate in a market adjustment because they're going to get the 5%. But if we're unsuccessful with filling the position, come October 1, when we have a higher starting salary range then, you know, they, we would then put it back out on the market at that higher, the higher ranges.
Let me just say, commissioners, as hard as we have worked to make West Palm Beach a better place in which to work, play, and live, indeed a community of opportunity for all, I am pleased that staff has come up with a way for us to now look inward. Our work heretofore has been to make this city a place that would be attractive to those who wanted to relocate here from other places and to improve that quality of life. And I don't shy away from undertaking that challenge. And I think for the most part, we've been very successful. But we cannot maintain that success if we do not have the infrastructure internally to do the work that's necessary. And that's what this plan does. It positions us as the capital city of Palm Beach County to hopefully attract the best and the brightest that this county has to offer that wants to be involved with municipal government. And so I am very proud of the work that Ms. Johnson, finance, HR has done to present to us a plan which I think positions the city where it should be in the marketplace and so that we can continue to have the infrastructure, the internal infrastructure, personnel infrastructure, that will enable us as a city to continue to provide the quality of life to our residents that they deserve. And rather than, as Ms. Johnson said, kicking the can down the road or sticking our head under the sand and wishing and hoping it would get better, we have here a comprehensive, intentional plan to rectify what has been a major problem. You know, employees are feeling overworked and underpaid. So thank you. And I would encourage commissioners the passage of this plan at the appropriate time. Anything else on this? All right, so I think we're ready to go to the second phase. Commissioners, do you want to take a housekeeping break for maybe five minutes? Okay, why don't we reconvene at 11:10? How long is this second portion going to take?
Probably about a half an hour.
Okay, all right. So 11:10, we'll come back together. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. Let us reconvene the Mayor Commission Work Session. And Ms. Johnson, if you want to take us into Part Two of the presentation, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Doesn't sound like it's on.
Yes, it's, we hear you.
Okay, thank you. Again, Fay Johnson, City Administrator. I'm going to lead this presentation and just do a brief overview of the proposed FY '24 balanced budget. And then I'm going to turn it over to our Chief Financial Officer, who's going to walk the board through the numbers. So again, we are presenting the FY '24 proposed balanced budget. Going to talk about the budget process, go through the property values and tax revenue, and then the actual proposed balanced budget for FY '24. So just quickly, in terms of the timeline, you know, we started back in February with the budget kickoff. The base budgets were submitted from the departments in April of 2023. And the base budget means that it's their operating budget for FY '23 with any mandatory increases. You know, where we have the 3% escalators within contracts, any uncontrollable increases related to health insurance. That forms their base. It excludes any new positions or other types of increases that are within their control. So it's that base. In May, Finance compiled and reviewed the base budget submittals. And then in June, I held budget reviews with each department. In July, we got the, well, in June, we got the, June 1st, we got the preliminary property tax values in July, the final values. And today, we stand at the Budget Work Session. As I indicated, what is being presented in terms of the proposed FY '24 budget is a balanced budget of $238,42,982. That balanced proposed budget is predi, well, let me get ahead of myself. It continues to demonstrate a growth in our property tax revenue. You can see where the current FY '23 general fund budget is of $226 million compared to the proposed one for FY '24 of $238-plus million. The other revenue sources, we're budgeting those to be flat, although the state has not yet released its numbers. Now, the proposed balanced budget includes a second milledage reduction. It's premise on a milledage reduction of .0657, which if approved by the board, it will be a reduction from the current milledage rate of 8.1965 to 8.1308. This is a .8% milledage reduction that equates to a million-dollar of forgone tax revenue. And I just want to highlight that fiscal year '23 was the first year that we were able to do a milledage reduction since 2008. And that reduction brought us from that 8.3465, which we held for several years, to the 8.1965. We've set a goal to bring the city's milledage below eight mils by FY '27. But the hope is that we can reach that sooner than FY '27, but certainly by no later than fiscal year '27. So in terms of a brief overview, the budget includes all of the core services for public safety as well as our quality of life. Certainly, we have to fund all of the internal governance services. And those are listed out on the screen before you. Our backend operations, as well as all of the market increases or the impact from inflation. All of those contractual increases are included in the proposed budget. And then we are able to continue with some best practices that we established in this year's budget. And that is funding for vehicle replacement. We actually increased the level of funding in FY '24 over what we have in FY '23's budget. Road paving funding, we're able to increase that. We're including a proposal to reallocate three existing positions to Assistant Director positions to complete our leadership succession planning. And that's within Housing and Community Development, and then Public Works and Support Services. So every department will now have a second-tier leader within that department. And then the budget provides level funding for contingency, which was another best practice that we were able to institute in the current year's budget. And as I've mentioned with the earlier presentation, the funding for the market adjustments and the colars are baked in the proposed budget as well as increases for health insurance. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Soufrant.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor Commissioners. Pritja Soufrant, Chief Financial Officer. I would like to just take a moment and thank all of the departments and all their teams for the work that they put into the budget this year. It was a little different in some of our processes, but we were able to make great things happen again in this budget, and it wouldn't be without their hard work. Additionally, I would like to thank Mayor and Ms. Johnson, as well as Jose Luis, for all of their effort in guiding this process as we have moved through. And Kyle Roberts, Budget Manager, and Rosanna Santana. As much as these market adjustments are a spectacular story, it broke the budget software. So the last three weeks have been an intense data entry and work trying to make this all be as exact as we can for you with the balanced budget with the data that we have. So no budget year goes without any curveballs, and we've seen a bunch already. So it's got to be smooth sailing from this point forward. So with that, as you're aware, on June 1st, we receive our typical estimated property values from the Property Appraiser's Office. And we receive our final values on July 1st. This year, when we received our estimated values on June 1, we were thrilled that we received another $21 billion assessed value, which was 2.6 billion or 14.65% over FY '23. We were not expecting those numbers to change between June 1 and July 1. In fact, the Property Appraiser herself said, nope, they're not going to change. And we gained another $140 million of assessed value between June to July. So with our final numbers, we have an assessed value increase of $2.8 billion or 15.41% over fiscal year '23. Sorry for the drama. You know, this is my favorite slide. So this slide shows our growth in that taxable value over the last few years. The second row from the bottom shows you the assessed value or taxable value, as well as showing all the way on the right-hand side, the increase in new tax revenue of $16.6 million. That final line, however, shows our value and the proposed milledage reduction, which means we would be recognizing 15.6 million in new tax revenue and thus foregoing $1,8,109 of tax revenue in order to reduce the milledage. This is just a brief snapshot of how our property values have increased over the last few years. This slide illustrates the significant increase in our property values in the green line and how our employee base has remained relatively stable over the years, despite the growth in our community, if you look at the comparative of the green line to the orange. Further demonstrating our consistency with our staffing levels, here you see our general fund, so just general fund only, full-time employee FTE count for the last 10 years. For fiscal year '24, we will have 1,158 general fund FTEs. This chart illustrates two existing personnel that were previously fully or partially funded by a grant and are now shifting back into the general fund. So these are existing positions, but they're now being fully funded through the general fund. All right, high level. Bear with me as we get into some of the numbers. As we look at our proposed balanced general fund revenues, this is a snapshot by category. So very briefly, our intergovernmental revenue is down slightly right now as we have a fire hazmat grant that we need to get entered into the system. Our miscellaneous revenue is down slightly because on FY '23, we actually budgeted for some sale of assets from Fleet. We do not have that in the budget currently for fiscal year '24. Similarly, in fiscal year '23, we utilized cash carryforward to fund a portion of our vehicle replacement program. We do not intend to do that for FY '24. So that's that large variance between the two budget years. The remainder of the revenue categories remain relatively flat at this point in time. Ms. Johnson noted that we don't have the state shared revenue estimates yet. They are very late at this point. They keep changing the message on the website daily as we check for those numbers. We do anticipate an increase in those revenues. But to give you the most conservative balanced budget in front of you right now, it's all flat. So when we have our final or our preliminary public hearing, you will hear an update on those numbers. So all that being said, from fiscal year '23 to fiscal year '24, the total budget increased 5.59%. Looking at your general fund revenues just by category in the pie chart form, property taxes is the majority of our revenue at 52.5%. And then charges for services come in at 18.4%. Just for example, our charges for services include things like administrative fees, sanitation services, EMS revenue, engineering service fees, and park and rec programming. Your proposed revenue highlights, again, we're looking at a $15.6 million proposed tax revenue increase, acknowledging the milledage reduction already. Charges for services is increasing roughly $400,000. And the transfers into general fund is increasing $600,000 as a result of increased funding that we're receiving from CRA to cover innovative policing. Shifting into the expenditures for the proposed general fund balanced budget. We'll go into more detail in the upcoming slides, but I want to note here on the reserves and contingency line item specifically. That line item covers two things. One, your contingency, but also the real estate management cost center, which we've held that in reserve. So your contingency amount for FY '23 and FY '24 has remained stable as the $1.8 million. But we were able to work through some accounting magic. And in FY '24, we are actually creating its own fund for the real estate management. So that reserve is not there. It's not gone. It's just put in its own fund. Glancing at these expenditures by category, as you might guess, our Personnel Services are 65.7% of our general fund expenditures, followed by Materials and Services at 17.6%. When you look at the expenditure highlights, your Personnel Services increased 9.8 million. This includes our 4% increase for the health insurance costs, the previously discussed cost of living increases, as well as market adjustments, and a $330,000 increase to the police overtime budget. Materials and services overall increased $3.3 million. This accounts for all contractual increases and addressing any necessary ongoing budget-related issues such as roadway and median mowing, tree trimming services to supplement staffing, and contractual increases relating to police body cameras. Continuing with materials and services, we increased travel and training in Police, HR, and a few other departments, minimally at $169,000. We also saw an increase of $286,000 in our solid waste contract. The capital outlay has increased $300,000 due to more expensive vehicles and the number of vehicles that we are required to fund for the Police Department by union contract. We also saw a $1.3 million reduction in our debt service costs. These are debt service costs that are paid out of the general fund due to vehicle leases and capital bonds that were paid off during fiscal year '23. And we also refunded the 2016B bond that resulted in lower debt payments. The final highlight for the expenditures here is our transfers out of the general fund going to our other funds, whether it be capital, vehicle, or other, that increased by $900,000. We saw a $200,000 increase in the contribution from the general fund to the waterfront fund. Our contribution for road paving went up to 1.4 million over the million from the prior year. And we have 4.3 million in the budget currently for vehicle replacement. Here are your remaining key dates for the budget process. We have an incredibly busy budget week this week. So we started with our Mayor Commission Work Session here today. And then on July 19th, this Wednesday, the community has an opportunity to participate in and view the budget presentation at 10:00 a.m. on Zoom or 6:00 p.m. here in person in the commission chambers. This Thursday night, July 20th, there will be a special commission meeting to set the not-to-exceed rate at 4:45 p.m. And then we'll roll into 5:01 p.m. discussing the, and seeking commission direction to prepare the preliminary fire assessment rate and chronic nuisance assessments. Just as a reminder, the fire assessment rate is set to remain at the $100 fee right now. As we continue on, you have your final fire assessment rate and chronic nuisance meeting on August 21st, the first public hearing for the budget and mil rate on September 11th, and the final public hearing and budget adoption, we hope, on September 27th, with the budget going into effect on October 1st. We have created another way this year for the public to share their opinion or ask a question about the proposed 2024 budget. Members of the public can scan this QR code to be taken to the community engagement tool, or they can go directly to slido.com and enter in 7162324 to reach the West Palm Beach budget item. This community engagement tool is currently open and live and will remain so until July 31st. Short and sweet, do we have any questions?
Commissioners, any questions? First of all, I, I do want to, I know you spoke about it, Ms. Ufrant, but I, I want the commissioners to understand the impact of what she said. They had to go through preparing this budget without budget software. It, it did crash. And that is not a small undertaking. So kudos to you and your team for all of the, I have no idea how many extra man-hours were devoted to inputting data, but somehow, some way, you were able to turn this around. So again, kudos to you and your team for making it happen under some pretty adverse circumstances. Any questions, comments, commissioners, President Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. On page twenty-four, slide twenty-four, where it's identified that there personnel services and the increase in the budget amount there and the final bullet point under personnel services is increased police overtime. Can you talk to that a little more?
Yes, one second. My note is here. So we had a, the opportunity to be able to increase the overtime for the police department by, I believe it was the three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So it, the police total overtime budget went from two point six six million in FY twenty-three to a three million flat in the proposed FY twenty-four budget.
You have something to add, Ms. Johnson?
Yes, I, excuse me, add some footnotes. While there is a, it is a three hundred thousand dollar increase to police overtime, I am doubtful that that is a sufficient enough of an increase in that, you know, we're anticipating the impact of being in a presidential election and what it's gonna have on additional police services here, you know, with, we have a former president who is a resident here that's running and, and, and every visit, we tend to get a request for police security. In addition, we have a governor who's running in the election and potentially there is gonna be an impact with visits to Palm Beach County and particularly our city. So what we have tried to do with a police budget, we, we had to reduce it back for FY twenty-one to put that money toward the new CBA. And then starting in FY twenty-two, we were building it back up. So FY twenty-three, we reached that level and now we're increasing it in anticipation of what's to come.
So the city and the taxpayers then cover the expenses related to providing that additional police protection?
Yes. Now, what the federal government had in place was for a sitting president, municipalities were reimbursed for overtime related to police security. When it's a formal president, that's on the municipality. At this point, the federal government has not put a reimbursement in place for additional security for municipalities of formal presidents. So we're going to bear that full freight here in overtime without any expectation that we'll get reimbursed.
Commissioner Warren?
This may not be a popular comment, but we don't have to always say yes, do we? Without getting paid by somebody else?
I would say, yes, we do have to say yes. Well, let me restate that. We don't have to, I would not advise. I don't think we want to put the city in a situation where you got a request to assist the sheriff's office with additional police and we say no. I just don't think that that's advisable. Certainly, we can, I, I misspoke, I, the board is the policymakers. We can say no. I would strongly advise against that, although from a budget standpoint, my first inclination would be to say no, but the right thing to do would be to assist with that coverage.
The mayor would not recommend saying no.
Yes, I just wanna follow up, if you don't mind.
Yes.
I, I only say that as more of a bargaining tool of trying to get some of the amount of millions and millions of dollars that are being contributed to these campaigns to assist, because I'm looking at my district and going over, you know, last week on the police meeting on some of the crimes that have been taking place, the fact that we still don't have a full police staff in place and there, and overtime is going up just in general, that it is putting a pressure. And so our residents are suffering because of a campaign that could, I'm just saying, like, could we at least try to have negotiations where we discuss that impact? Because it's, you know, our, our governor should realize that the strain it puts us on. A former president should realize the strain it puts us on. And so I would hope that we're at least trying to do what we can to get some compensation for that, given that we have our own crime pressing needs at hand for our residents.
The request for assistance is not coming from the campaigns, it's coming from the sheriff's department.
Right.
So they're the, I'm not gonna, we, we're not seeking reimbursement from the sheriff. We're just doing what we can to assist them. Now, you know, if there is a way to get directly to the campaigns to have that conversation, you know, we, we can certainly try that. But the request for assistance is coming from the sheriff's department to help them do their job. I, I understand the frustration, we're frustrated as well. It's not something that we brought upon ourselves, but it's a unique situation where we have a former president living across the bridge and now we have the sheriff's department saying, help us out, West Palm Beach. The town of Palm Beach doesn't have the problem because they prohibit those people from crossing the bridge. So it ends up on Southern and Flagler and, anyway. I, I hear you, Commissioner, hear your frustration.
Yeah, and I'd also like to add a footnote. One of the other aspects of that is that, you know, if, if we were to have, you know, a speaking engagement by the former president and then you have the rallies, you know, we have to provide that additional coverage in terms of police, you know, presence, even just for a rally. You know, we have these rallies popping up and protests and all of that, and it requires additional manpower. So we're getting hit with overtime from that perspective as well.
Armando Font, Assistant City Administrator. Just one clarification, just to what the city administrators said. Generally speaking, the campaigns, when they come in, they do, they do apply for a permit, for an event permit, if they have a specific campaign event that they're doing in a public space, in which case, they go through the same process everybody else goes through, paying the fee. If there's additional security needed, they pay for that as well. So we have had campaigns that, that go in for a special event permit and pay for that.
Well, thank you for that clarification.
But I think a lot of the overtime we're seeing is not necessarily for those events. It's when there are, the, the former president, and who knows what happened if the, when, if and when the governor comes to, to our county or our, our city and say he holds a private event in a hotel. I'm not sure that they necessarily, they don't file a special event permit for that, do they?
So it, it falls under the special event ordinance? So there is a, there is some language regarding private events? It depends on the size and the impact to the city's budget?
But again, I, I think the, the driver primarily even, if they have a special event permit and they, they pay for that, we, they, it does not include where we have, let's say, a protest where folks lined up on O'Geechovee, you know, for people coming in or on Southern. The event may be somewhere else in the city, but we have the protests that either will precede the event. Oftentimes, if you think about it, commissioners, you all have seen it, we'll have them protesting here at city center. I mean, because it's like, I mean, that's the focal point of our city. So we have to provide that additional police coverage.
And in all fairness, it also happens on the opposite end of the political spectrum. When we were having the Black Lives Matters demonstrations, we also had police overtime that was required to, to manage those situations. So this is not one side of the political aisle or the other. It's just doing what we have to do as a municipality, as a city, to maintain public safety in, in our city. Commissioner?
And that's, but the point is well taken. And I think that the Black Lives Matters were a totally different situation. I think that when you're having a rally, and I would hope that when we're looking at these permits, that maybe we, there's a way for us to factor in those protests and the impacts that they have on our police force and that maybe we say, hey, look, it's not just the, the security around, but it's the security that we'll need here because of what you're doing in our city. Again, it, it only goes to the fact that I've got residents who really, really wanna see their police force doing what they need to do in their backyards. And maybe there is a way that we can work that in so that we have law and order in a manner that we, we should and being paid for it.
Duly noted. Any other, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, I have a couple of questions. The first is, thank you, it was really great to see the reduction in millage. And I know that many of our residents have been talking about the increased property values, so I know that they'll be pleased to see that, should that move forward. I was just curious, we talked about that we haven't received the amount of state shared revenue. I, I don't recall, did we have an estimate of what we think that will be? And knowing this team, we already have plans for that?
We have an estimate in our mind, not in the numbers. So the numbers are flat when trying to be conservative. We do anticipate another sizable increase from the state share revenues, but we did not incorporate it in this version of the budget right now.
So we left it flat? We didn't increase it, but it's flat? So that, that is the number right now?
Okay, you left it flat, I see. And, but we, we do anticipate it increasing? And have we talked about what we would put those funds towards? Do we have, I, I recall in past, we'd have a laundry list of other things that we haven't funded and what, what's on the table?
Well, I think probably, first of all, we have not had any focused discussion. When I say we, meaning administration and the finance staff. But from my perspective, where I would first look would be at the vehicle replacement. The plan that we started working on actually projected a need for eight million dollars a year for vehicle replacements to keep up to speed on that. This year, we were able to fully fund it because we had the rescue dollars. In the proposed budget, we have the four million, so you have that gap. So that's one of the big areas. And then I think we still have some other small expenses that we have to work into the budget. And so we will look and then put together a plan and make certain that we highlight that when we come back to the board.
With the software breaking, we were not able to complete our internal service charges. So the allocations from some of the other funds, like IT, into the general fund. So we're at like the halfway point of getting those complete. So we had to stop the numbers in order to prepare the presentations for this week. So you'll receive an update then for the preliminary public hearing or the first public hearing, where we will then have, the numbers will be totally done by that point. They won't be moving again. We anticipate, if we don't have the state shared revenue by then, we'll be taking our own estimates and putting them in the budget. And then all the other expenditures will be complete at that time.
Thank you, follow-up, Mayor?
Yes.
I can't recall in the past at those budget hearings or if they're at these workshops, I know, I'm sure, we're tying this back to our strategic plan. So will we get a presentation on how the budget ties back to our latest strategic plan?
Yes, well, now if you take note, in the first slide, we aligned it with the pillar eight, financial sustainability and operational excellence. So it is aligned with that strategic pillar.
Right, I guess I'm just, I'm talking about all of our funding and where's our funding going towards the projects and plans that we have all set forth in, in the entire strategic plan?
It won't go into that level of detail as part of the presentation, you know, on a, because we really, for the most part, we don't do program budgeting. You know, we highlight certain programs or certain projects and certainly we can tie that to strategic, the strategic pillars, but we don't do what in the budget world, pro, program budgeting. But some of that will be baked in the presentation.
Last follow-up, Mayor?
Yes.
And I guess that kind of really goes to my next question and what I asked at the last budget discussion that we had was about public input. Because I, you know, I, I received the email that you sent, thank you so much, last week about the public input that we had last year. And, and maybe this is part of the reason why, in your response, it said, you know, we didn't really have a lot of public input. And, you know, that's something that I think as commissioners, we all, you know, it hurts my heart a little bit to hear that, you know, the public is not responding. And, and for me, I feel like maybe we're not asking the right questions or maybe we're not engaging them in the right way because clearly, they've said they wanna be a part of this process. They wanna, you know, have input over how these dollars are spent. So I don't know if it has something to do with what you just said about that it's not program budgeting.
So let me just give you an example. And, and I think that we would probably fall flat on our face if we were to try to do this. And certainly you can do it, but it would be an inordinate amount of time and effort to do it. So essentially, we would have to take all of the various programs that we fund and then cost them out to come up with the total part of the budget. Let's say if we segregate the personnel and then debt service and all of that, but just the part of the budget, whatever that happens to be, let's, we got a two hundred thirty-eight million dollar budget. So for talking purposes, if a hundred million dollars of that is just on programs, whether it's the housing programs, library program, parks and rec and all that, you then have to retract that data and then assign how much that particular program translates, what's the cost of putting on that program? And it would be a long list of programs that then would constitute program budgeting. Very, very tedious. If your budget is not set up that way, that's pretty much a manual exercise. Now, how much value do we think we'll get out of that? So let's just say if we pull out what we spend on homelessness and then we have that with the community. So then that's a program and then we wanna get their input. Well, do you want to see this particular funding for this program eliminated? You wanna see it increased, you wanna see it maintained, you know, flat? Then you get into that kind of question. You're gonna have certain parts of the community with different answers and all of that. So then, from a policy standpoint, what action do we expect the board to do? If the consensus of the board, well, we want to increase the funding for this particular program, but then now we need direction on where you want to reduce funding. So program budgeting, if it's not set up that way and you don't have that kind of software, you're talking about a tedious manual process that I don't know that the return on that kind of work, you know, would suit us well.
So what type of questions are we asking them on the Slido then?
Right now, it's literally, do you have any opinion that you want to share? Or do you have any questions about the budget and from, you know, the community meetings? Because when you get into this, if you ask a question, it all depends on what action can we take from that question? And so we are looking to hear feedback and we want to hear what people have to say about the budget or about the city services. But that action component is where budget input becomes very difficult. And it, just to elaborate a little bit, it's never an easy item and then never an easy balance to strike because it depends on the community too and the elected officials. Program budgeting, as Ms. Johnson communicated, is very difficult. And that is years of working the community up to understanding how that works. If I may have been here slightly over a year, I know that we are lacking on the budget communication and communication in that front in general. I have received information about different budget transparency tools and some different tools that are out in the market online right now that I've started to research. But as you've seen with the staffing levels and the current But as you've seen with the staffing levels and the current conditions, I can't bring that forward in a useful way. But we are researching it. We do agree that we need to do more, but unsure what that more looks like right now.
Yeah, and irregardless of the complexity of doing program budgeting, you know, as we look forward, once we reach that stabilization within the organization, certainly we can, we know what key programs we offer, we know what key services we offer. So we can reformat the information that we're presenting in the community budget so that the community has a good idea about that and bake that into what is presented to the board. So you can do that at a certain level, but it just won't be pure program budgeting for, you know, the, I would say maybe the nerves like Bridget think of. I'm not including myself in that, but we can certainly do some of that.
And I think another thing to look at, and as we went through in the first hour or so, or two hours of today's meeting, it's a matter of perspective. The community may not know the challenges that we are having to develop what I call this internal infrastructure and to improve it or to stabilize internal infrastructure. They don't have that perspective. They don't know the numbers of vacancies. They don't know the, you know, the voluntary, the reasons why people are leaving, the percentages. But from a best practices situation, to get this organization humming smoothly, those are things we have to look at. But if you have the, the public kind of looking in, they may figure that those dollars, rather than going to personnel, should go to street paving or something like that. So at some point, we as policymakers who have to adopt a budget, need to make sure we have, operating under the best data that we have available, which may not be the data that the public has available, but we have to make those hard decisions. So, and I think we try to be somewhat sensitive. I mean, in this year's budget, I think like last year, we took money out of general funds for the first time, I believe, for street repaving. We normally left that into the, in the capital improvement budget. But we recognize that there's a priority. There are certain streets around our city, and so we need to prioritize having those monies available and not just leaving them in the capital improvement budget. So we try to be sensitive as we go along, but we also have to keep in mind we have a different perspective. We have data available to us that the general public may not have when they set their priorities. Commissioner, President Warren, and then Commissioner Fox, and then Commissioner Ward.
Thank you so much. I love the idea of a budget transparency tool. I think that helps tremendously with our pillars, our key pillars, and also public confidence and public trust when they were able to see that information without having to ask questions. So kudos for that. When we look at slide number eight, and the line for fleet, can you tell me what's included in that? For budget expenditures?
From an internal governance fleet.
You mean in terms of the funding?
What's covered, what's included in that?
Oh, those, those are the vehicles? No.
Yes, I think it's the general fund's contribution for, because fleet is maintenance, fleet maintenance, sorry. Thank you, Kyle. Fleet maintenance, which is a service charge into the general fund from fleet. So all the departments hold a portion of fleet maintenance.
So that would be like the oil changes, the tires, that's what I'm trying to understand. Does that include vehicle replacement? Is that simply maintenance?
Just maintenance. Just maintenance. The vehicle replacement is dealt with and the transfer out of the general fund into the capital. So this is just the costs in the respective departments for maintenance of the vehicles, caveat the vehicles that are actually maintained by fleet.
Okay, let me add a footnote. So for fleet, it's set up as an internal service fund, where whatever that total cost is, it's charged back to the departments just for maintaining their vehicles. Because you take our full complement of vehicles, each department has a certain number of vehicles, and then to maintain them, you know, we charge them for that. So that's what that is. And then the vehicle replacement dollar in funding itself is on slide, what is, my slides are getting mixed up. Is that 10? Yes, but fleet there, that's just goes to the internal service fund and the chargeback for the cost of maintaining each department's vehicles.
Does that include fuel costs?
Fuel cost is budgeted where?
Good morning. Kyle Roberts, Budget Manager for the city. The fuel cost is part of the fleet maintenance charges, however, it is in a separate line item. So the fleet maintenance charges and the fuel and diesel budget is separate and apart from one another, but it is essentially fleet charges that are passed on to the city from the fleet fund.
And that's broken down, and we're able to review that?
Correct.
Yes, in terms of the fuel cost?
Yes.
Oh, yes, we have that detail. Yes.
Okay, I forget, it was Commissioner Fox, I believe.
Thank you so much for this rosy picture. I know that many cities around the country are still trying to recover from COVID and other issues that they're having. So I'm very pleased to see this and feeling very blessed that we can move ahead with such a rosy picture. My question is about the FTEs on page 17. I know we spent the last two hours talking about bringing up our current staff to market rate, but I'm looking at, over the years, it seemed like we were, you know, increasing our numbers every year until about 2020, and now we're leveling off about the same. I'm wondering, as the city grows, I know that we still have several vacancies that we want to fill, but how do we determine whether more staff is needed? I know that as there's more people on the road, we might need more sanitation workers. We might need, you know, all the different positions. So I'm just curious, at what point do we look at adding to the FTEs and if that's needed?
Commissioner Fox, we actually look at it on an annual basis. For this year, while we're not, we're focusing on the general fund budget, I know we have four new positions in, four, actually fleet, for fleet technicians, because that was the area where we bought forward a request to get a, utilize a contract to help with the maintenance of vehicles and what have you, rather than us being able to have positions. So it's not in the general fund, because they're in a different fund, but there are four new positions there. But on an annual basis, departments look at their needs and determine if new positions, you know, should be requested. However, as part of the budget direction, with that one exception, given that we have high level of vacancies, it just didn't make sense to add new positions because we need to first get to a level set. Once we fill positions, we will continue on an annual basis where they look at personnel needs. And if, you know, it warrants a request for additional positions, they will include that in what we call an above base request. Because now, you got the base budget request, that will be an above base request, and it will go through a separate analysis and review to determine if it's going to be included in what's proposed to the board. So that's done on an annual basis.
Commissioner Ward?
I just wanted to kind of comment on Commissioner Lambert's question and then Mayor, what you were saying. I think, you know, when I was first resident, I went to my first budget meeting, I was dismayed that it was just informational, and everything had been decided, and we were just kind of there. But now, from another perspective, I look at it and go, there's so many months of discussions, and the road paving is a great example of that. People have been talking about that for a long time. And I think that, you know, these meetings, that you can highlight that, and you probably get comments, well, you should be doing more, more mobility, and that maybe those comments turn into what's planned for the next fiscal year. Because these things are months and months of planning, and it's not so quick that you can just change, completely change a program. And so I know that even just on a smaller basis, on, you know, the CRE budgeting, how much longer we start talking about that budget and the conversations that happen to lead up, whether it's a small program here, and I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that, you know, right after we adopt this budget, that we start talking about, okay, what did you like? What did you not like? Were there glaring issues in fiscal year '24 that you want to see changed for '25? And how do we get to that level? Because it takes so long to change those. And so I did shift my mentality, and I kind of appreciate that approach because, again, it's on us to kind of keep that conversation going and address those needs on an entire basis.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. And just a follow-up to that. I think maybe something that would help with those visioning and discussion would be just an update on our strategic plan and to see, you know, what were some of those projects that we said we would focus on, and how are we doing on those? And is there anything new that we want to move forward? And I realize that's a separate conversation from the budget, but just that we're keeping those top of mind, and so that the community is also aware that these are the things that are at high level for us.
Yes, now, we did the one update on the strategic plan, and we have another update that is coming up. So I just want to preference that the strategic plan is not necessarily, in terms of projects, you know, there is not a one-for-one correlation, you know, with the budget per se, but certainly there is a connection, because everything that we do, you know, should align at least with the strategic pillars. There are strategic projects in there that may have been funded at some point in the budget, and the funding is just carrying over, so it won't be in the newly proposed budget, but we can pull all of that out. We can certainly connect the strategic plan priority projects with the funding in the budget. It may just not be new funding, but carry-forward funding, as I'm thinking it through in my head.
Understood, thank you.
Assistant Administrator Armando Fana, I just wanted to also point out that as we go through the fiscal year, directors and other staff are on the ground. They're attending community meetings, and so things are adjusted that way. And their budget submissions, a lot of time reflect what they are hearing on the ground in terms of programming or where the funding is going to go for paving. So it's a year-long process, because they are on the ground, they are listening. I'm on the ground listening, so things are adjusted, not only for the budget, new budget year, but throughout the year as well.
Commissioner Lambert?
Just a follow-up. I love that. I think that's great. And I think it's just about messaging and making sure that we reiterate that at our neighborhood meetings. So thank you.
Yeah, I think that's great. Every F resolution that you approve is literally amending the budget. And so that, I think that is, Armando, a great perspective to offer.
Yes.
And I think as we emphasize what we have accomplished over the time, and at one of our last workshops, we talked about the CIP budget and how we need to start getting the word out on projects that we have accomplished. And I know Diane and her team are working with Kevin and other departments to begin communicating to the public what we are doing, what we have accomplished, so that the public can understand what it is that we're getting done. And so, yes, it's a messaging challenge as well. Any other questions, commissioners, on the budget? The one thing I did want to highlight, this is also slide 10. And Ms. Johnson or Bridget, if one of you could talk about it, because this is one of those situations where, you know, we, as an administration, have worked to try to be proactive on issues, and that is the vehicle replacement situation. Prior to this administration, while the need for replacing vehicles throughout our city was there, we never had a plan for how we were going to fund that. And so we had to scramble, and every time a vehicle needed replacement or a series of them needed replacing, we were scrambling. We were taking money out of the reserves, and we're trying to figure out a way to do it. Rather than be, listen, you know, when you have a fleet of vehicles, you know there is a schedule that you're going to have to replace those vehicles. But for whatever reason, under prior administrations, that step was not taken. We have been proactive about coming up with a vehicle replacement program, where we're setting aside or seeking to set aside, what, $8 million a year? So that we're not in a scrambling mode whenever we have to start replacing, whether it's police, whether it's sanitation, fire. We're not always having to scramble as a city to find the monies to replace vehicles which are essential to our public safety, to, again, it goes back to the quality of life, to continue to provide to our citizens the quality of life to which they have grown accustomed. Ms. Johnson, can you, maybe not at this meeting, but at some point, I would like for you to remind us, if you will, of the necessity and the importance of having a comprehensive, proactive vehicle replacement program. I mean, it may seem like a little thing, but those are the kinds of details that go into budgeting that over time makes it easier for us to function as municipal government.
Sure, Mayor. I think maybe we can plan for just a focused work session on our vehicle replacement program in that, you know, with what the board has approved in this year's budget, being the first year, where we fully funded the first year of the vehicle replacement plan, it'll be good to report out how many vehicles replaced, revisit, you know, the schedule and all of that. So we will pen that discussion. Yes.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions, comments? Again, finance team, Ms. Johnson, everybody involved. Listen, some of us on today, but I remember when at this stage in the process, we didn't have a balanced budget, and we were trying to figure out what the heck we were going to do before the end of budget season to balance the budget. So I appreciate the fact that at this stage of the game, we at least have a balanced budget that's presented to us. You've presented it a lot of the tail as to how, what the thinking was to get to this point. So thank you all so much for your work.
And Mayor, before we leave, I do want to just echo your comments about recognizing the budget team for getting us here with us having had that crash in the system just two weeks ago and all of the manual label that it took. You know, I don't want to be remiss in also recognizing their efforts, and that includes Mrs. Soufrant as well.
Thank you. Under Mayor's matters, I do have one item. I was going to do this via email, but since we're all here together, I wanted to introduce my new Chief of Staff, Tom Valeo, who is here. Tom, stand up. Says he doesn't know how to take orders already, so this is good. Anyway, you'll get an email from me later, commissioners, but I didn't want you to just find out via email. I was hoping to be able to speak to you individually, so consider this an individual phone call to each of you to introduce Tom, and I will do another job of communicating that. Welcome to the team, Tom. It's good to have you. And he will be working on, obviously, that bridge between the mayor's office and you, commissioners, and so you'll be seeing a lot more of him. And thank you. Anybody else have anything for the good of the order? Again, very, very good work session. Thank you all for involved, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.